Our regular board meeting for July fifth, two thousand and seven. We do at this time, if everyone could please either silence or turn off their cell phones, and then join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'd just like to remind everybody, particularly since Denise isn't with us today, if those who are going to speak today could make sure they announce their names so she can get it into the minutes. We have a couple of timed items. Ten-ten's, a nuisance landowner appeal, and then ten-thirty, a solar pilot application, ET Capital. That's going to, uh, thank you, Darrell. That's going to probably take on a little bit different time slot, and the folks that are representing ET Capital are on their way. They ran into some automobile difficulties. Dave Knowles will be coming in and updating us on what's going on with that and so forth here in a little bit. Additions to the original agenda, OYA contract, Jake Greer. We're hoping to get him here in just a second before our first timed item. And then Commissioner Kessler, you sent out a request on Jordan Cove.
Yeah.
Okay? So, Jake.
Commissioner?
Yep.
For you is the...
Thanks, Darrell.
Is the contract for the youth authority, and is for a biennium, so the seventeen-eighteen biennium, for a total of sixteen thousand eighty-five dollars. Sixteen thousand eighty-five dollars, yeah. And what we utilize that for is to offset our detention costs. So, what generally happens, and what has been happening, is we never know our set amount of money coming from the state until later on in the legislative session. So, we budget the full amount using general fund dollars. And then, once we learn that money coming in from OYA, we offset, offset that. So, this year for fiscal year seventeen-eighteen, juvenile court requested an approved twenty-five thousand dollar budget for juvenile, or juvenile detention. That's been coming. And we are receiving eight thousand and some change. So, that eight thousand will offset a portion of that twenty-five thousand dollars. So, essentially, the county will be responsible for seventeen thousand, and the contract will offset eight thousand.
Very good. This has been reviewed by legal counsel. Ready to go. Okay? So, this week, we had work sessions, and we're going to do action items today. I'll, uh, I'll move to approve document number one-three-seven-nine-three, refer this contract between Lake County and the state for the OYA contract. Uh, second motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve document number one-three-seven-nine-three, hereafter referred to as the contract, from Lake County and the state of Oregon for the Oregon Youth Authority budget contract for fiscal year seventeen-eighteen.
And then, that will be the same amount of money for next fiscal year.
For the following volume, part of the volume. Okay.
And that would save the county how much?
Sixteen thousand dollars over two-year period. For this fiscal year, eight thousand eighty-five dollars, minus my two.
Eight forty-two fifty.
So, eight thousand forty-two fifty, this fiscal year.
And you've spoken with that treasurer?
Have accounted that into the budget. Yeah, and we, in fact, I believe I budgeted about sixty-five hundred dollars coming in for this year. So, we received, I believe, what we budgeted for.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Very good, Jake.
Thank you, guys.
I would say, great, Jake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kessler, did you need, uh, I actually didn't call, I apologize. I didn't call for public comment. So, is there any public comment? Okay? Did you want to...
I'll do it.
Undergo. Yeah. I think it's pretty quick.
Yes. Jordan Cove and the pipeline associated is from Marlin over to the coast to Coos Bay. I think everybody's probably aware of that. I attended last Thursday, one of their public input, and personally, there were so many folks there that take numbers, I didn't get in. But, uh, Clamath is supporting that. And I would like to know if this Board of Commission would like to send a letter to Port in support of that. The, what I've written up, as far as just a draft, I made about six different points, just comparative of how this pipeline is comparable to most any other across the United States, like I did to the natural research part. International trade, there's tens of billions of dollars from that state for contracts to sell, which would help substantially with our national trade debt. And, uh, fees is on a deficit, so it helped there. On natural resources, it's kind of addressed it, that it goes across a lot of young geological mountains, as opposed to back east where it's all flat. So, there is some hazards there potentially. But, we as a country wasn't built on, up toward hazard, that state-of-the-art implementation to the best of. And another benefit to landowners, many landowners would welcome that, because they'd get a decent payment. Others' landowners may not, you know, this one or the other. I addressed the benefits to municipalities, both as a tax base, but also as increasing availability of natural gas to smaller communities, that might help existing businesses and attractive businesses. And I addressed the aspect of health, where it can be accessed by a small community as likely, which I'll clarify later, it could help our health on air quality. Now, the question comes, it's from Marlin to the coast, so how is Lake County benefiting from that, the national trade, that's one. But, the other thing is that the company would help facilitate along the nature of pipeline that's included at the end here. And also, if you give, say, a pipeline, the existing group's pipeline's not fully utilized, and that the work this year has capacity. But, if you have a pipeline from Marlin, another pipeline at capacity, so it would still, I mean, would be satisfied, and it would need another pipeline to provide the export to foreign countries like Japan. So, that would be a benefit for Lake County. So, just writing it up, I'd like to know if you guys would like to support it or not.
This is where I was at, Commissioner, when you sent that note out, even before then, you know, we've, we've, we've had different discussions, each of us with different people. Commissioner Winters, you know, he's been working on this, not this particular one, but the Jordan Cove project. What I would support is what those counties that are impacted by that specific line want. And it's been kind of all over the place. I mean, from Coos County, which they were trying to, they put, put it on the ballot to outlaw, and it didn't pass, and the Commissioner were very happy, as you alluded to, Clamath County's very supportive. I want to support our fellow counties that are impacted by it, both in a positive way and potentially in their minds in a negative way, in, in, in our support, or specifically, that's, that's how I feel about it, for my support.
But, I can address how counties other may or may not, but when it comes down to, my thoughts is that the national trade was just good for our country, and it would have a side benefit even to Lake County.
Yeah. Yeah, I...
Well, I, I can add on.
No, I, I, I understand that, and, you know, we all understand that if that line is built, and I think the more appropriate terms, when that line is built, to Jordan Cove, it will have a positive benefit on us as a result of the need to put in on a, on a right of way that was built to accommodate a second line, which is going to be beneficial to us.
As I mentioned at an earlier session, I encountered a person who was looking at the existing for a future, and he said three to four years out, and the Jordan Cove process would be three to four years out. Is this one coincidence there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, I think it's a done deal, but that's, that's my take on it.
Well, all of the counties that go, that it goes through, is there any boards of commissioners that don't support it?
Yeah, I can resource that.
I, I think that's, to capture that in the letter is very important, to support them, because that's where it's going to make the most impact, is we support through them. And then, within exactly where you're going, to support where it can impact Lake County with. But, I think if we showed unified support by counties, that would have, have more...
That right effect.
Yeah. And then, we, we pull in what, what we want here as the county ourselves, you know. We might catch there the right, the right people, don't we?
Well, under addressing benefits to the municipalities, I address the pros and cons of other towns.
Yep. And I think we probably ought to see if the town would sign in or do a letter themselves because of it's going to impact the town here.
Could be more to the town than...
Yeah.
Yeah.
The air quality, I really like that part of it and everything, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, we're a little past, sorry, Mr. Gunkel. We have a ten-ten nuisance landowner appeal. And Commissioner Walters, you had done a little looking at that, Aileen's here, Jennifer's here, Mr. Gunkel's here, so I'm going to let you kind of lead this discussion.
Well, first, as Chairman, you need to open up the hearing, because it's an actual hearing, so state the time, and the hearing is open, and then probably Jennifer, Aileen, and I can back team on the ordinance and the process.
So, at ten-fifteen, we will open up the hearing on the appeal of the nuisance landowner appeal from Mr. Gunkel.
So, I, I guess, just to, my, my part here, a quick overview, as ordinance number one-sixteen was amended and redone here a while back, and then we hired on a nuisance abatement officer, which is Aileen. The process is, is that all the nuisance abatement and documentation is done by Aileen for the Board of Commissioners. It can be appealed to the Board of Commissioners. In ordinance number one-sixteen, you can see that note at the very back of the, the very bottom of the back, so there's a clean separation, that the commissioners aren't out there doing the abatement process. We hear the appeals, make a decision on what comes before. And this is the first appeal that we've received since we've, since we've amended ordinance number one-sixteen. So, as, as we have Aileen and Jennifer give an update on the appeal that came before us, one of the things, Mr. Gunkel, on one-point-eight, the appeal, the written request for such a, unread, pervade amount of it, the written request for such an appeal shall contain a brief statement setting forth the fact that an appeal is requested and in concise language that relief sought, and the reasons why the relief is being sought. I'm not sure if you've fully seen that or read that, so you probably haven't. And your appeal gave us exactly the concise part, but we're here today after they give a thing, we'll listen and hear what you have to bring for us on the appeal side of it. The Board of Commissioners, at the end of it, will make a decision whether to make a decision right away, will probably close the hearing, and a prediction would probably be that we would take it under advisement and get back to Aileen and have a letter put together of what we believe needs to be addressed or not addressed. That's not absolute, but that's an option that we can have, so. Any more overview, Mr. Chairman, than that? And Aileen, Jennifer, on that part, did I cover that pretty well? Okay. So, go ahead and give an overview, ladies, please.
Um, okay, for the record, I'm Aileen Harmon, the nuisance officer for Lake County.
Jennifer Stevens, building department.
Thank you.
And, um, so I went through, you know, investigated this property as a nuisance, and I believe I provided you guys with photographs. And the sections that it violates, according to the nuisance ordinance, you know, I can go through the depositing accumulation or on the property of any junk, trash, vehicles, garbage, vehicle parts, vegetated debris, other material, which creates a fire and safety hazard, and is likely to injure a person, including children. And then, number four, stagnant water without a proper inlet or outlet, mosquito or other insect-free ground. So, that comes from tires and those types of things that the water can collect in.
So, so that part of it isn't like drainage pipe or anything like that?
I, I didn't see anything like that.
Okay.
This would be things that can collect standing water, ice on tires, that type thing.
Thank you for the question.
Uh-huh. Number six, the keeping or storing of accumulation over seven days by new appliances and refrigerators, which you can see those in the pictures. And number eight, you know, weeds, accumulation or any of the following weeds over ten inches tall, which creates rodent, arid, grass over ten inches tall, probably creates a fire hazard or other obnoxious root over ten inches, which would be bushes and, you know, stuff that's out of control. And I did go by the property on the twenty-eighth, and some of that had been needed, so some of that had, some of the weeds had been knocked down. So, that's where I'm at, and I think it's a nuisance, and, you know, it follows our, our nuisance ordinance, and so I think we should have it abated. Or ask Mr. Gunkel to work with me, and we can work on a plan to get it abated.
Do you remember what? I read through all of this the other day. I mean, I'm trying to find Mr. Gunkel's letter.
I have a copy.
It, it was, it was in here. I know I didn't pull it out.
I can read it here, or I can let you read it real quick if you'd like.
I haven't had the opportunity to see it yet.
Well, he's going to speak to it, I think, but I'd like to...
I got it. He's not halfway through.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Now, he asked for an itemized list of what we consider a violation.
Am I having to put together an itemized list? Because the list, I guess, would go as far as the nuisance letter that we, that I sent out, which specifies, you know, the grass weeds over ten inches, the junk, the trash, that is itemized that way.
I don't necessarily know. You can itemize them, unless you go on there and trespass, and that's not something we want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, I do not trespass on property. And then, you guys can see, I say, photographs. And you can see the various things, so you can see appliances. I know in the alley, there's a, there's a freezer, like a deep freeze, and that's a real estate danger, and I'm worried a child could get inside of it. It looks like it's an older style. You know, I didn't open it or anything, but that, that's this one here, here.
Well, I think it's probably appropriate at this time that we hear from Mr. Gunkel. Thank you, thanks. Thank you.
Do you like a nice cushy chair, and you want to just...
Whatever.
We'd love to have you come up, if you would, please.
There you go. Right here. Perfect.
Um, basically, I, I'm sure you all know this is part of the estate. My parents have both passed on, and so this is my brother, his children, a lot of stuff is going to be divided up with them. So, it's, it's taking a little longer than I wanted. I have sold several items that they come back and pay me for, my, hopefully, they'll be gone. I have loaded up part of the washers and dryers, incidentally. Three of them still look fine. I put one of them in my house yesterday. They're not just junk, they're, I loaded up three of them to go to the scrapyard, and the freezer in my back alley, it's going to go too, along with, there's another one there, too, that's got to go. And I think, um, my, one of my main concerns is, there's a lot of antiques though, as I'm sure you know. And, uh, the tractors, probably I could have most of them running within a day. They're not just jokes sitting there. I realize I can probably just lay them a little better, so that maybe keeps them complaining down, but, uh, you know, I'm willing to work with you, but I, I'm not willing to just take all my stuff and get rid of the meat. You know, they complained in the letter about camp trailers. Well, one of them is my brother's, and his kids haven't got there to pick it up yet. There's two of them that I use. I don't take the good one up to, uh, lake refine estates in the summer when I go with it, because I don't want to tore up the whole one, you know. I'm not out so much if it tears it up on my road. The, I have to follow about three or four loads to dump already. But, I guess, too, what I need to know is exactly what you expect me to get rid of. As I'm sure some of you know, like those old tractors, the, the farm all regulars about ten years ago were worth about five thousand each, and antique value. Of course, you take away the parts to keep them running, a five thousand dollar tractor turns into a fifty dollar pile of junk. And that's something I don't want to see. They're also quite easily adaptable to other things, you put out any motor and all of that easily. I had hopes of one day getting a small place out somewhere where I could go ahead and do a little farming and ranching. You know, the more stuff I lose that I need to do that, that's something that wouldn't be possible for me now.
What about some of these vehicles? I see buses and cars and things like that.
Okay. The buses are used for storage. There's probably a good three to five thousand dollars worth of stuff in both of them. They're by far better quality than any tin shed I've seen on the mountain market today. The wind picks them up and throws them around, and they sweat, and all your stuff gets ruined in them, and the bus doesn't do that. The one bus does run, the other one has been made into a trailer. In fact, it runs good, it was transporting our children to and from school a few years back. And, uh, there's nothing wrong with it, other than I'd have to put a battery and some gas in it, and it's ready to roll. We are planning on selling some of the property, so it's got to be cleared first. The, um, and the, like the one bus, at least, I'll have to move it. The ten, uh, ten-sixty-six property is the one I intend to sell first. But I've got to clear out other stuff that was my brother's in order to get the stuff out of that house and, um, get it sold. The Chevy truck is sold, hopefully, is supposed to have the money.
The empty blue one?
Blue one.
But you see the Chevy truck? I see a Ford sitting here, but I see a blue with the rusty hood sitting back here.
Oh, but behind the bus?
Someplace back there.
Yeah, that one's, that one's sold. The green one was my brother's, the forty-six Chevy. His kids have to then get out there and get it back. I'm probably going to have to put brakes on if it were driven up to Corvallis or Albany. There's basically not much wrong with it. It's got a rebuilt motor in it, it's in pretty good shape. The bucket for the tractor has been sold along with it. The, the sensor treatment has also been sold. I'm just waiting on the money to get them out of there. The blue Buick, I thought I had it sold, it was supposed to have the money the third, and I haven't seen it, so I may have to relist it. I'm going to be listing several of the more vehicles in the paper for sale, try to get them out of there. The motorhome van that's sitting out front, um, if it doesn't sell pretty soon, I'm going to haul it off and take the tires that I had listed in the paper for three hundred and fifty bucks, and throw it up five to seven hundred dollars worth of tires on it. If it doesn't sell, I, I don't think there's a whole lot wrong with it, but...
I'm guessing some of the other things, like Tussin Mobile, the office desk, buckets, tires, into general items.
Yeah, some of that's going to go. There you go. The, the one office desk I actually use as a rolling table, but it's going to get moved from the front yard, back closer to the bigger boulder, like, I've had a bad problem with that down there this last couple of months. Like, in fact, I ended up having to put locks and hasps on the stuff where they were breaking in, and, um, it's been a real problem. I've stolen both of my chainsaws, my weed eater, I had to go buy a new weed eater just to, um, you know, get some of the weeds down. I took my three-wheel bicycle, but I caught somebody riding in through town and called the police, and I got it back, but, um, there's, um...
Many other miscellaneous, like ice chests...
Yeah.
...garbage cans, gas cans, Vents' Post. Can't make out all the, there's a blank collection.
Yeah. A lot of that, like the Vents' Post, they actually belong to Harold and Nuz.
Who?
Harold and Nuz, along with the tins that go on them. We're probably going to have to sell them back to the plant, although, because my son doesn't have her own ticks and lice, he grew to, he likes people. I have trouble, yeah, to point out.
So, Mr. Gunkel, the key things that you said, we can go through all these and look at all the pictures and all that stuff, but you said you're willing to work with the county.
Yes.
You're willing to work with Aileen and come up with, with a plan, develop this baby. You've already started getting rid of some things, you're already starting to work on that. You came in here today, very genuine to talk to us about that. Appreciate that very much myself. I will make a comment on the tractors. I love seeing those in the praise. For many years, we've seen them, your dad driving them and stuff. Those are truly antiques. I do appreciate the value of those, and seeing those ran through... I do appreciate the value of those and seeing those ran through the craze and stuff. So thank you for that over the years. That's a part of our heritage, part of our history. I appreciate that. Your willingness to go in there and start straightening up things. I know you've had several different family losses and you're dealing with that also, trying to make sure that things go to the right family members and be able to sell them after you get through the estate side of it. Thank you for that part of it too. So appreciate that. So for me, I can go through and I can point out things. I believe that you're out of compliance, but if you're willing to sit down with Aileen and come up with a plan and work with us, that is the whole thing in this process, is to give people an opportunity to do that. So for me, that willingness right there means a lot. So I'm, I'm not gonna go over each individual individually. The other two commissioners want to ask you a few questions. I'm, I'm gonna be comfortable with you working with Aileen and with Jennifer and doing that part of it.
I believe in working with, as commissioners, and you mentioned, you're willing. Refresh us on the, how the ordinance reads as far as timeframes and working with landlords.
Well, they have ten days from the letter. You know, we can work on a plan. As long as they have a plan and, you know, they're, they're doing something, then we don't, you know, the county doesn't have to go into debate.
Yeah. And that's kind of along with Commissioner Winters. If you work with Aileen on the plan, progressive plan?
With some timelines?
Timelines. And progress in that fashion, but we need to stay with some timeframe so it doesn't go to next year and next year and next year. Understand? Just a proactive way of working with it.
Yeah, 'cause we have some resources that can help, you know, take tires or different places that can help with that.
Yeah, you could get in touch with those people.
Yeah. And he's done a great job on researching a lot of the resources that can help with some of that.
Do you by chance know what the process is to get titles to stuff to sell it?
Yeah, I know she's been...
I'm asking that.
We're working on that with the attorney. The attorney's supposed to give back to me.
We would think, he would be the expert on that, Mr. Gunkel.
Are you talking about the family owners being, being the vehicles under, titled under their name?
No, that, that I'm able to do. There's a few items there that the titles have been lost and they were not in our name. Or they are, I don't know. And you go to DMV and ask them, they just tell you they're not allowed to tell you.
Give Aileen a chance to work on that. She's brought in a lot of information. She might go help you, no guarantee, but she's bringing in a lot of information to help landlords to be able to get through the process.
There is, if, as far as title, fate, collection, if it sets unclaimed for X amount of time, DMV should issue that.
That you have, I know that you have to send a certified letter to the owner on the record and stuff that way. I, I've looked into it that far, but like two of them I know are deceased. They're buried in Fort Rock. One of the heirs to the part of that estate is also deceased. So it's, I know it's a matter of sending that information. Send the letter, of course, it's gonna come back deliverable. But there's the process from that point on, I'm not sure about. There's some of that that I do need to figure that out so that I can get rid of.
There's a process for banning vehicles where you can declare them. We can't give you legal advice, but we can, I can point you in the direction of the Organizing Advice statute.
Okay. So for the purposes of the hearing, just because this is an official hearing on an appeal by Mr. Gunkel about these points that were cited in the letter, I'm hearing the very same thing my fellow commissioners are hearing, that first and foremost, that there's things in these items that are of value to you, to your family, and you intend at some point in time for those to, to go to the right phylomers. And, you know, in different cases, as has been stated, some of these things that are in, on the property are of high value, but they're mixed in amongst everything else. So I totally concur in this hearing process 'cause we wanna be sure we've addressed that you're appealing these items. And in the discussion, it's been very clear, you're, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, you're in agreement that there are things that need to be done.
Oh, yeah.
But there's also things that have value and you wanna keep and eventually they'll probably move on or you'll keep them because you own them yourself.
Yeah.
So...
What I would like to see is work with Aileen on the timeframe of progression. Identify what you need to keep. Move out other items, again, what you keep. It's a presentation, you know, in early fashion. Comes down to a timeframe of progress. So if you have any suggestions? I mean, if, if we say a month or two months, we'd like to kind of know what's gonna get accomplished in a month or two months and what needs to be accomplished in the next two months or whatever.
Well, if, before you answer that, Mr. Gunkel, if you don't mind, Commissioner, I, I would like to see us be able to close this hearing and for you to go forward with Aileen and work on that so that she can bring that back to us. 'Cause she's gonna, she's gonna represent the county's interest and the countywide interest while working with you on the needs that you have. I, I think it'd be a little difficult today to say you're gonna do this, this, and this. That's what that meeting's gonna be about, so...
Then it'll come back to us.
Yeah, then it'll come back to us. Is that satisfactory to you?
Yeah.
Yes.
So once we close hearing, we can?
Yeah.
Make that decision?
Yep.
So from there?
Okay.
Is there anything else Philip or Aileen during the hearing process that needs to come forward or anything you wanna point out? Once we close it, then we'll, the commissioners will discuss it amongst each other and give the guidelines to Aileen at that time. That's when we give the official guidelines to Aileen. So if you have anything else you wanted to bring forward while the hearing's open?
Yeah. Other than one thing I'm considering as far as timeline, it's pretty hard for me to come right out and say this, this, and this by this date when I can't tell from one day to the next what Cornerstone or Sargent Transportation is gonna do. You know, and that's been one of the problems. As I'm sure Aileen already knows, we work some pretty ridiculous hours at times. We're behind at work and so it's, a lot of weeks, you know, I've only had one day of that off. Working twelve hours a day, I'm getting a little old to turn it into sixteen's.
Well, if I, if I can suggest something, then maybe we can at least get some information on some of the vehicles and we can give a direction of what way to go. None of that's gonna happen quickly. So, you know, filing for lost titles or figuring out what way to do that. If we can just show on paper we're starting, we're starting the process on how to, you know, how many vehicles there are, how licensed in your name, how, who are they maybe licensed in? And kind of start working from there. A timeline of this day, maybe this, this stuff here, the refrigerators and stuff would be cleaned up and, you know, kind of just slowly work it?
Yeah, part of that we're already loaded to go.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing 'cause that's the discussion that you all can have outside of the hearing process, just the official part. So at this time at ten forty-two, we will close the hearing on an appeal. I like what you were talking about. As I say, I think that's gonna be good information. Commissioners?
Well, we've, we've sort of, we've dabbled into it during the hearing process, but for me, very appreciative that Mr. Gunkel came here with attitude and the commitment to work with the county today. That's, I appreciate that. What we want to see happen. I'm very comfortable with giving our staff the go-ahead to work with Mr. Gunkel, set out the appropriate timeframes that he's able to work with and be able to stay on top of it where they can communicate between each other and she can report back to us. If it gets to the point where that they're at an impasse or whatever, then she'd come back to us and ask for actual of it, excuse me, actual abatement of it. At this point, I don't see a need to go in there and abate it ourselves. So, but that's where I'm at. I, I do, I do believe, Mr. Gunkel, you're going to end up with more antiques, more things that are of value to you than what you really realize. And so if, working with Aileen, if those are put in an orderly fashion, a lot of times the neighbors and other people, it's much more acceptable. And there can be some guidelines Aileen can work with you on that. And so if they're orderly put in there, once you give enough time to get the two properties separated and all that, I think that makes it a lot more acceptable to the public and to the county. So that, I stress that a little bit as you're working with Aileen, so...
I see a kind of two-part as far as working with Aileen. There's some things that are gonna take time, like get tires and identifying what needs to be transported to relatives. And then there's a general everyday stuff that can just go to the trash.
Yeah.
So I see a two-part plan.
Yeah, I, I agree.
But we do need to see, understanding your work schedule, but we need to see, working with Aileen, a timeframe of progress.
So, so I would, I'm sorry, you was getting...
Well, I was just gonna reiterate what Commissioner Winters said. We do appreciate you coming in today with a positive approach to this, wanting to come to a good conclusion. That is our hope within this whole program, is that we can do that work with the landowners. Excuse me. And come up with some positive resolutions for all the parties. So we are looking forward to that. We're looking forward to the work you'll do with Aileen and that we'll get to where we need to get for everybody.
Appreciate it.
So I, I believe in hearings, we need to give a direction, and I think we can do that by consensus. And I would suggest that direction be for Aileen to work with Mr. Gunkel with appropriate timeframes, prioritize, understanding that you work six days a week with that. It may be a little bit slower on some items, but some of them be right away. So consensus board, Aileen, direction to work with Mr. Gunkel and Jennifer to work with him and come up with a plan.
Oh, I got to ask, Mr. Gunkel come in and meet with me sometime within the next two weeks so we can get the plan in writing?
Yeah.
If that's gonna be okay for him?
Is that doable, Mr. Gunkel? I'm calling you Mr. Gunkel, I'm just calling you Philip. You can come in with the next two weeks' date and set out Aileen with a plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what she wants, but...
She, she will work with you very well, trust me.
Could we maybe go onto the property with you and kind of talk about it together?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe easier for her to eat the property at some point and just go through things and then that way?
The, the problem's probably gonna be with me working during the week, but I, I don't even know what my schedule is today, so...
Yeah?
You're not here today.
Well, I'm here for now, but I'm probably going in about, you know, from there, I don't know.
I'd be really flexible.
Yeah, Jennifer, we have flex scheduled times, so you, you let us know and Jennifer and Aileen works that out. Philip?
Aileen and Jennifer were a few of us at the rest of our friends' homes.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, our next item is a timed item at ten thirty and that's been put up. But I'm gonna ask Dave just really quick before we go to the other items, for a little update on what we're gonna do.
All right.
Philip, please come on. Thank you, Dave.
I'm Dave Knowles, the assessor. Been working with pilot agreement with some folks and kind of facilitating to work with you guys. In March of sixteen, you guys gave an agreement out to Solar Six LLC. This company was owned by a holding company of Orgus. And in their agreement, they were going to be completed in the fourth quarter of sixteen and then by November, December thirty-first of sixteen, they were gonna file a copy with us for billing and taxes. That never occurred. This year in seventeen, they sold the company to purchase, every capital. E.T. Capital was acquiring them in a private agreement on item number eleven. They had the ability to assign it to another owner, which is, you know where it's coming. He's in transit. He left Bedford this morning. He's had car troubles in the quarter to ten. He was back on the road west of Cloud. Said he's gonna be here between, start the time is eleven thirty to quarter twelve. I've been working with them, basically, they want to file a new pilot agreement or file to have this one modified and recommend a new one. It would start at December of seventeen and go twenty years forward. And that's primarily what they're gonna do. I've been working with legal counsel Jim Bailey on it. They've provided us back in June, they've completed everything that Jim's required as far as E.T. is Orgus. Gave the information that they've transferred to E.T. E.T.'s gave us information that they actually own it. And they've also filled out a, a application, all the information. So there's a gentleman by the name of Matt, he's gonna be representing E.T. Hopefully he shows up through a little bit to take care of that, so...
So, let's go back to the agreement. Dave, you were doing some research on some amendments?
Okay. The original agreements, most solar companies are packaging companies where they put the contractors together and, and financing and make it all together and then it goes off to another company. And this is what's happened here. We've talked about trying to realign. I've been working with Jim Bailey and also Commissioner Ken on trying to clarify some language in our agreement and because it's a little bit loose and make it a little more binding and better for the county. So I talked to Mr., tried to talk to Mr. Bailey and I reached him by his cell in his office and I've not been able to talk with him yet. That'll probably happen this afternoon.
But when the gentleman comes, we can...
I would recommend you go ahead and move forward and accept this agreement. Most likely it'll be pending and mail transferring. You guys can work out the terms and the dates and that kind of stuff. And then this agreement will have to be formed up and then have him signed and come back to you guys and go on. What it boils down to is talking with E.T., is their financial side is concerned and wanna make sure that this pilot is in place? And, and that's something that they don't have at this point? And so it's very important then?
Well, I'm all for giving him and the company, I don't know what's wrong today, but the assurance today that we're going to work with them and that we can come up with dates, but it needs to be clear that this agreement that we're modifying, and you talked to me about a month ago about it, that we actually understand today that it is gonna be a modified agreement based, you know...
From, from the format that we're currently using?
Correct.
It needs to be, you know, it needs to be true. And I apologize, I facilitated it in working with Denise and you folks and Jim Bailey. I got the finer parts done with Kim. I just assumed it was done and went to Denise. I thought that was all moving forward. Apparently that didn't occur, so...
We're reacting with you on that.
Yeah, as soon as we find out.
Okay. Well, hopefully when he shows up or by the time he shows up, Mr. Bailey will have called you back.
And I will, I will lighten you as soon as I can.
Okay.
And for the audience, the property, the location is out there?
This is a solar site located just north of Roberta in Missouri. This is a solar site located just north of Roberta, Missouri. And I live out north of town. This project just started to break ground in the last 16 days. It got ground cleared, they've got some surveying done, they've got road easement put in, punched in, and they've got a transmitter line starting to take form. And talking with them, they want to have completion of this project in the fall of this year and be online and operating as of January 1st of '18. It'll tell perfectly with our pilot agreement and our timing.
Yeah.
And also for the audience, what this agreement does is, previous to this, in I think it's 2015, the state legislature passed a pilot option that company can pay taxes at an amount of $7,000 a kilowatt or megawatt?
Megawatt.
But as previously, it would go through the.
The department revenue would value it and tax it as a utility account. This is a fixed flat rate tax for 20 years. And the solar people really like it because they know exactly what they're getting into.
I think we need to follow up on that $7,000 of megawatt hour and see if it isn't a kilowatt, because I just got our electric. I just got our electric bill with the big kitchen. I think they think it's a kilowatt.
My goodness gracious.
Anyway, the size of the project would be a 10-megawatt unit, which would be a good size. Does not make it a lot larger than the county, but it'll be a good sized project and be great for the community.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Thanks for following up on that.
Darwin, is there no land use issues with this?
No, they've been approved two years ago.
Just a change of ownership, so there's nothing figured that way?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You should have in your packets a couple of documents from our auditors, Oyster Professional Group. One is their standard engagement letter, which goes through their process and our responsibilities as far as the '16-'17 fiscal year audit, which they have already studied. The second is signing the contract. I believe that contract doesn't spell out the dollars. It should be about $28,000 this year. We do a little bit of an inflation factor. So again, the audit process, I think they spell out in that engagement letter that they're not tasked with reviewing every single financial transaction or thing that we do. It depends on our risk and certain things that we're engaged in that they, they pick and choose transactions or contracts or documents to look at.
I think the amount that it sent here, the fees, $27,942.
Oh, okay. I thought it was gonna be around $28,000, so I wasn't sure if they see it.
Front row says a different number than that. But I said, front row took around a bit up to a whole number. But I heard you say they already started and we need an agreement.
Yeah, so they come as close as they can to June 30th to look at inventory items, so they are here on June 30th.
And now we need an agreement for them to go forward.
Yes.
And that's for the fiscal year '16-'17 just concluded.
So there are dates this year that, like I said, they were here June 30th. They're coming back till like 10th. They'll pick up this agreement then. And then their week-long audit process will be, I believe it's October 9th or 16th. It'll be in October this year that they'll be here for the full week to go into more detail on several of the documents.
Okay. So we need to take action on this.
There's one-year contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to approve the contract between Lake County and Oyster Professional Group as presented. Only thing I'd like to have changed, it changes from Lake County Court to Lake County Board of Commissioners. This is scribbling.
Second question.
Motion's been made and segmented to approve the audit contract with Oyster Professional Group and Lake County with the scribbling change of Lake County Board to be inserted instead of Lake County Court.
And for clarification, this is a contract with them to do, we're required to have an audit each year.
Yeah.
And they are one that have done for years. This is renewed or this passed?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we need to approve the engagement letter.
Did we not do that during the exit interview?
There's two separate documents.
I thought we'd done that during the exit interview. I'll move to approve the engagement letter as presented by Oyster Professional Group.
It's been moved and segmented to approve, approve the engagement letter as presented in the other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Kerry's. So who's, do you need to sign today or?
Yes, if you can, well, yes, please.
We can get it here in a little bit if you want to.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Brownfield Assessment, Brian, that's change.
Any construction between here and Clennam Falls?
Yes, there is.
Ship's building?
They had the road flyer. I sent it about 10 minutes in that section just to the west.
So I better plan for it for the Fridays.
I would allow at least 10 minutes, yes, because they have a lot of vehicles out there. I think they're right, right before the park, the State Park. They're doing some.
So your accounting background, Betty comes out eight minutes instead of 10. You're accounting for your time.
I do, accounting for my.
Yes, okay. Welcome.
Good morning. Betty Riley, Executive Director of Subsidiore Oregon Economic Development District.
And Ginger Castor, Development Specialist for South Central Oregon Economic Development District.
Ginger will be covering most of this, but just a little bit of background is, we, working here in the county, have worked with a local economic advisory committee that meets periodically and identifies what are considered key issues within the county. One of those issues really, in some ways indirectly led us to this Brownfield grant, which is looking at the need for workforce housing and the housing issues within the community here in Lakeview and also countywide. So part of that led us to Leyland Group in Portland, who had done some work over in Clennam with funding that they had received in Clennam through the Brownfield funding. So there's, there's planning dollars that they, that allows them to use that to identify the, they did a housing needs survey, which was very valuable over for Clennam Falls to go on. So working with them, they, then led us to another group, which is Cardinal, which really is the company now that is proposing to work with us on the Brownfield assessment, Brownfield assessment grant.
Sure. We got to Cardinal through Leyland because a lot of, a lot of the reason why was financial, was economic. Leyland provided a scope of work to our advisory committee that was going to cost somewhere between $15,000 and $18,000. And I began to shop around to various resources, including private foundations, to see if we could get some funding for that. And there was a possibility that we could, but we'd also need to have some matching funds from the county and any local municipalities that would be in, in the geographic area of the project. And we know that, that sources, you know, funding sources are tight. So at some point in the early spring of this year, Leyland Group contacted me and said that they had become aware of and had been, and had some work with Cardinal International, which is an environmental engineering company that specializes in the United States in working with communities to do brownfields projects. And of course, one of the first things is that they consider in working with communities as an EPA Phase One, Phase Two grant. And I think in your packet, you've got this handout that sort of gives an overview of the type of work that Cardinal does in the U.S. with those projects. This led us to having a couple of different conversations. And Commissioner Kessler was involved in that as the liaison for economic development. And we had several members of the economic advisory group, including Roberta Vanderwalde, who is the town manager, and Jim Wollz, who's sitting in the audience here. Couple of different phone calls with their two staff members to understand a little bit more about their process. And we are at a point now to bring it to the, to you as the county commissioners, also to the town of Lakeview. We have, we're scheduled to go and present to them next Tuesday at their regular town council meeting. And also with the city of Paisley. And we'll be meeting with them this evening at their town council, or their city council meeting, to present the same concept to them and hopefully get some agreement to move forward with the possibility of doing a project. The project would entail Cardinal being the lead. They would actually write the grant for us. There is no fee for them to do that. They receive their fees through, obviously, if we are successful in the grant in being the environmental consultant for the project and assisting and facilitating in the community and with business owners or, or property owners about the project. So there really is no expense other than time and energy to any of us to participate in this. They have a good track record in working with communities, particularly ones where, you know, major industries have been phased out for whatever economic reason or natural resource reason, such as timber, asbestos, coal, you know, different types of things that we all are pretty familiar with. Typically, the most successful applications that they work with is where there's a consortium involved and there is more money available when there's a consortium. Up to $500,000 on a three-year project with no match. So there wouldn't be anything required from any of the municipalities or the county to participate. I'm trying to think what else we need to let you know about. The, the whole concept or the whole idea would, just to give you a good example, we have approximately 35 acres in Paisley, or it's in the county actually, just outside of Paisley. That was a former Carlin mill site. And Bobby Carlin is aware of this project and he's very interested in, in participating and partnering as a landowner in the, in this project. And he will be at the, at the Paisley City Council meeting tonight to show his, his support of that. So another example would be almost, there's almost, and I don't, I mean, this is just off the cuff because I'm not exactly sure. There's around 60 to 70 acres in the north industrial park here in Lakeview that is either not being used, it's vacant right now, it's for sale, or large portions of properties that are being used or a piece of the property is currently under, you know, in use. And we all know that we're probably not gonna go back to using those sites for the purpose that they used to be, yes.
Can I just add a little synopsis?
Yes, yeah.
What this Brownfield does is address cleanup of contaminated sites so that if another purchaser wants to come in, he knows your status, whether it's contaminated or not. And the overall gist of this project would be to contract an EPA through the Brownfield program, would offer a grant if we're successful with no match. And we would chat with different landowners, like Bobby Carlin, to be at a mill site. If he wants to sell it or do another business command, they need to know whether it's a clean site or not to get their financing. So this project is to work with willing landowners and others to address the site, to certify whether they have any contaminants or not. If they do, then there's another program for cleanup if the landowner is so willing.
Correct. This project addresses, the, the first two phases address bringing the concept to the community and to the landowners and helping them understand what it is. It is not a witch hunting project at all. And so that first phase and phase two is to get everybody comfortable with the concept and find out who is willing to participate and to include the community in this because it will have, you know, would definitely have a pretty drastic impact on, on any of the regional areas that we'd be working or looking at. And this could include, we can add as many possible brownfield sites as we want to. It could be like Downs Market, on the old Leather's Oil Service Station that's down on the south end of town or any other, anything that we might identify. It doesn't have to be just the industrial sites. It could be anything that there could possibly be a question. The, the first two phases, I'm not sure that they are involved in actual testing, but it gets to, it gets down to asking and permission to do that. And then after those phases, there are, like Commissioner Kessler said, there would be, we would qualify then, communities of properties, to go further into the EPA process to request assistance. Those landowners could require, request assistance in any cleanup that might be found.
Sort of basically, the phase three is the assessment part of it and that's when the EPA, the EQ slash EPA comes in. We've done a Brownfield cleanup in Christmas Valley a few years back.
Okay.
Then, but this here will bring the people together so that they don't have that fear factor of.
Exactly.
Is, they're gonna find contaminant and now I can't get rid of it.
Right.
We'll change that where we will help you get through the process.
Exactly.
And then there is another leg for the assessment side. There's other dollars available through the EQ EPA to do that, all the way to the cleanup side of it.
That's correct.
It's very, very good.
Yes, and we don't have to have the.
I'm sorry. Along the same lines as this discussion, I had, first and foremost, I really appreciate the collaboration. Sorry I missed the Cardinal meeting the other day that you had set up, Ginger. The $500,000 with no match, that's wonderful. But what's in the back of my mind, and it's just, just to get it, you know, out there, is as we start through phase one and two in this process and Cardinal does a great write-up and we get, we'll say, $500,000 over the three years. And whatever is done relative to that with the properties that there's agreements in this collaborative to look at and evaluate, if things don't go any further than that, do we have any obligation to the half a million we were provided in the community relative to this whole process? Are we tied into any commitment if we find that we have properties that were identified in the write-up that are evaluated to move forward?
We, no, these funds are assessment funds. And so the only obligation hopefully is to use the dollars that are provided. Clennam, the city of Clennam Falls and Clennam County have been working on a project, this, this same funding source of funds. They have used it actually on one county property to be able to go in that, that the county took back during foreclosure on taxes. Were able to go in and do the phase one, which is the paper trail of any potential contaminant and a phase two on that property so that now they can put it up. And basically what the result will be is they'll demolish because a lot of, there is asbestos.
Asbestos.
Yeah, asbestos in the building and also other contaminants that will need to be cleaned up. Private sector, a couple of properties that have been sitting on the market for years and people were afraid to touch because they were adjacent to where there was pooms from former mill sites. They have gone through and done the in-ground testing and found them to be clean so that they're now on the market and hopefully will sell soon. Where it doesn't work is if there's a chain of command of a landowner that owns, that has. has, is responsible for the contamination and they're not willing then to spend the funds or to go through the process. So then we may identify properties that have issues, but if the landowner is not willing, we do not force them to go anywhere. If they don't have the resources or are not willing to put the effort into the cleanup, then we will know that that property needs to have the work done, but we will not force that.
So these properties, basically ones that pass all will be certified?
They'll be certified. And the intent really is to put property, you know, that has deteriorated in many cases, properties that are sitting there vacant and not, not being useful, put them back into the marketplace rather than using reefer and building area.
It will take the mystery of the.
It will take the mystery.
Yeah, it would make the properties much more attractive for those landowners that are trying to sell and those that are looking, you know, to find that type of property. And, you know, it could be that some of it could be repurposed into housing. I mean, obviously, that was one of the things we were looking at, but also for recreation.
Parks.
Soft, yeah, parks and soft or lighter industry.
Major community, much more marketable.
It does. Yes, much more attractive.
And I know there, in some cases, you know, there's the fear factor that we will be trying to assure the community that we're not out to.
That's the challenge.
That is the challenge.
And that's the reason why this is.
We come up against this where it's kind of, you know, it's that chick that.
What's wrong, Mr. Walz? Have you ever heard that before?
I have a few times, but I always gotta remember on this one it's voluntary.
It is totally voluntary. There's no, there's, there's no big, you know.
But you'll never avoid the fear factor.
Well, and it's been driven by you guys. Part of the fear factor is the Board of Commissioners.
Sure.
You know, so you take some of those components out of there and you report back. I think it's going to be a good.
One thing, it does come with some administrative dollars so that would offset, you know, the staff time that we would need to put into managing the.
How come you thought I might ask that question?
Because I asked that question.
Yes, there would be, there would be a need to have an administrator identified and agreed to upon for the project. And so that's one of the, you know, that's one of the details that needs to be taken care of right up front. And as soon as we have agreement from everyone, then Cardno staff will come very soon to meet with everybody and begin the process of gathering information for the grant. The application will be released sometime in September, probably towards the end of September. So the timeline for that would be due sometime in mid to late December. And then decisions made sometime in late spring. So the project probably could get off the ground, it started in the summer of 2018 or the fall.
On the application, as you mentioned, it's in September, but there's some pre-work that needs to be done.
Yes.
And that's kind of the causative urgency to discuss today.
Or, yes.
So you need from us today a motion that we're willing and wanting to be a participant in this county-wide organizational-wide collaborative for Cardno and Phase One and Phase Two assessment for the grant and the process.
And will be willing to write a letter to that, to go with the grant.
Willing to sign one.
Willing to sign one, yes.
I'm a terrible writer.
And we would, we would be very, I mean, we will come before you at any opportunity that we, we can get to give you an update of what's happening. And obviously, you will be involved in much of the planning effort up to the very beginning period of working on the grant. That will, will keep you very closely informed as long, as long with the other consortium members and any landowners that want to be in that process.
And just to reiterate for the audience on camera, as far as any properties, it's totally the willing basis of the.
Totally.
That's correct. It's very. Yes, it's a voluntary process. We're not going in and doing any taking whatsoever.
So you just need the motion today.
That's what I mean.
So.
How should we state the motion?
Well, it's written here. I can.
I wrote one for you and for your packets and you might try to.
I will, I'll make the motion that we, Lake County, agree to participate with other county partners in Cardno in a collaborative federal EPA Phase One slash Phase Two assessment grant planning process for the possible application for a grant from the EPA in September of 2017.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to agree to, we, Lake County, participate as, as I just said, it's on the recorder, I won't repeat. Any other discussion? Hearing them all in favor? Aye, aye. Commissioner Caris, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great thing. Okay, Dave.
Did you get my email list or?
Yes.
Did you get my email list?
That may be reading this one.
That was a good.
Oh, yeah, all of that does, yeah. You're lying to like, this is good.
You laugh at my response.
Okay. Hi, Dave.
Good morning.
Thank you, David, building the green. So we went through, as you guys looked at it, I hope, and seen the changes we did. We're requiring a security deposit for requiring background checks. We changed in the rant on two-one, two-point-one on section two, of course. Tenant shall pay first and last month rent prior to taking possession of the space. If we don't have that, then we can't occupy the building until we have that.
And this is for the county incubator, county town incubator building.
Yes, I don't have.
And that's your part for people to lease the bike.
Yes. An additional rent under two-point-two, kind of stayed the same, but we added tenant will have seven visit stays to show to the landlord that have been changed over or.
All the utilities.
Yes, all the utilities. I did read it.
Okay. I do appreciate the yellow highlighted. It's easy to pick right up to that. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then.
Ten-point-three, I think.
Yeah, ten-point-three. No liability insurance, we need to make sure they have it. And we added in that liability insurance policy or tenant shall provide landlord evidence of liability insurance policy before tenant can occupy the space as well. If they don't have it in front of us when we go to sign the agreement, then we don't do an agreement, they can't occupy the building until they show that.
This is one of those I should have taught, and maybe I'm wrong, run this by legal counsel. Should the county be named on that? Insurance, usually there's any verbiage like that, the county will be named on the insurance that's required.
Go on, sure.
Yeah. So I think I missed that one, Dave. I apologize. That's just standard when it comes to insurance.
I think this is the landlord should be named insured on the policy.
There you go.
Does it say there?
Yes. I did read this. Landlord should.
So I stand corrected, but the records show.
Yeah, it's on there.
It is right above it. Thank you, Commissioner.
Two of the things, Dave, and are you, Dave, I don't want to jump in here. Are you through this? I just wanted to talk a little bit about putting in this agreement with how to get your deposit back if they, if they all comply with everything and everything's all good. I need to add that in there. Commissioner Shaw and I discussed that this morning, that maybe they should, we should put that in there for the tenants and for, you know, just for their peace of mind of, you know, okay, if I do good, am I going to get this back? How am I going to get it back? So I need to put this in there. And Dave and I also talked about, because he lists some good inspection requirements and when you can, and four-point-five and sixteen-point-six, but I think he's going to make a little change to that for its pre-inspection listing. So we have that clearly pre-inspected facility.
We need to know what condition is before we judge what the tenant.
But we'll do a walkthrough and I'm gonna have a walkthrough form.
Close.
When we go through, if there's any damages, yes, we'll take photos of what's existing, already there, this way they're not reliable for them. So we are going to do a walkthrough check before.
So you're talking some additions or changes to this, but was wanting to get it approved today because there's potential renters out there now, are you?
Well, as I mentioned to Dave, I believe he can make those changes if we agree that they need to be incorporated into the agreement that we're ready to.
We approve a contingent upon him putting those in there and legal counsel review.
Pre-inspection and the deposit, what the requirement is to get your deposit.
Is there anything in the agreement about working with SCOEID for the business part of it, or was that eliminated or not addressed in it for a reason? Or is that important?
Well, I'll, I'll jump in there. I don't know if Dave has anything to add, but Ginger, as we mentioned the other day on the, the other agreement, it's, it's one of those, whether it should or shouldn't in a lease, it kind of goes without saying, SCOEID is first to vet.
Okay. Just so that it's clear for them. That's the only thing. Is that they decide they don't want to cooperate or whatever, then is there something?
No, between you and Dave, any communication on that incubator building, it'll be very clearly stated from Dave that they need to go through you in the process.
All right.
Up front, before they even go to the county candidate.
Before they get the seatbelt. We've not kind of, already, I've kind of done that. I just.
Right.
You know, before you even talk to me, we need to communicate with you.
And I have worked with the two that have interest now. I have some, some things that I would like them to do.
Okay, sure.
I have, I have, you know, done that vetting process.
For the audience, there's actually two parts. Before we ever issue space agreement, they go through a business plan and such with you guys to show that they are viable candidate to lease the space, and then the lease agreement would come into place.
Okay.
The, and, excuse me, the, the one question that in concern I have is tiny because what, what I'm finding, especially with Lake County businesses, it's very difficult. I, we ask them to go through a class, which I haven't been able to get them to go to because when I offered it here, they didn't come and then they don't, they don't have the time to come over to Clonop. So it, that's part of the logistics or the kind of the timing of all of this process of, you know, right now, we've got a couple of folks that are actually very anxious and have, feel it. They've been, you know, pushed shuffle, shuffled. And so it just, it's, there is some concerns I have about the timing of if we require them to go through the business planning process, you know, upfront, then that adds about two months into their needing to plan at every time. And that information needs to be shared with folks.
I just expect you guys and Dave to work together.
So while you're looking for some flexibility, if there's somebody that's a good light industry or business that wants to go into the bigger building with our geographic location, it's tough to get through that. I would think that if your analysis or your view of these people is, is that they're going to do it in timeframe.
Right.
That there should be some flexibility there, but.
Right, just, just.
And we can add a whole more.
No, I totally agree because it's all about us not giving your business relative to vetting potential applicants. You tell Dave they're good to go. He runs before us with then a lease agreement.
And, and that there may be ongoing requirements that we put as part of it.
And in this situation, where we're going through a new lease, we're trying, we're trying to get that together. So that kind of put it down.
And delayed it, yes.
And I've simulated too, so now I'm, the tenants at one end, you know, and I know they're frustrated, so I just kind of explain to them, we're mental of the changes, so bear with us.
It doesn't take long for them to figure out if they're a willing participant in the business plan and that part of it. And they deal with that pretty often if they say they're a plus or a work of the business plan, go ahead, Dave, you can bring it to us. That's, I'm, I'm good with that myself.
Yeah, just for clarity, it isn't, you guys do your thing first because you're actually doing it for us. That's part of the process.
And we should have two.
Because you have the expertise.
We should have two potentials for you that will come before you in the next commissioner's meeting.
Exciting.
They're really ready to go.
Yeah, that's what we want.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to accept the amended commercial lease contingent upon the new verbiage being put in the two sections mentioned during the meeting and legal counsel's review.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the amended commercial lease. And that will be with the two additional changes relative to verbiage on how someone will get their deposit back, what would be required to do that. And then the pre-inspection being clearly stated in that there'll be a pre-inspection part of the occupancy. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. That's, this is the way it's supposed to work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't, I have read the moving minutes, but I don't have them in front of you guys.
We have.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ginger.
Thank you, guys.
The minutes I have for approval is May thirty-first, June sixth, June seventh, and June twentieth. We approve those stated as presented.
Pass this down this way. I haven't had the opportunity to. But I did take another word.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I shall see you all later. I may be back out in the woods or camp.
Good for you.
Yeah. I'll be back till tomorrow.
All right. Thanks for that, David.
Hey, I'll, I'll tell my fifth, oh, I'm coming back.
Okay, so that's the second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Any other discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We don't have any more departments here still. There's a lot of dates. Now, we're gonna have to, I believe, recess this meeting till Matthew gets here. So is that of the good of the order? You want to stop here then?
Let's take a little break. We can always do a liaison at the conclusion. Does anybody give us some advices from both of you? I like to have a much resuscitated.